...of protection within our school's environment. And I pray Father God in advance that you will touch all leaders that are here tonight, touch our board members, touch our superintendent, everyone affiliated with the school system. We pray for your blessings upon all of us. All kids strive to do their best academically and extracurricular activities as well. Pray that you bless the ones that's playing in games tonight for the good of their lives. And I pray Father God that we will do things in a way that is feasible and it is pleasing. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I would like to note that Ms. Johnson cannot be with us this evening. She is one of the friends who's been hospitalized this afternoon. So please keep praying. So at this time, can I ask this?
Yes, sir. We have the agenda that has been presented to the board members. And I would ask for your approval of the agenda for tonight's work session.
Motion, Mr. Wood. Have the motion on the second call, please.
You'll find the minutes is the first item of business from the January board meeting. If you want to take a minute to review those, if there are any changes or deletions or needs to make. If there's no objection, I ask you'll place this on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. The next item on the agenda is the monthly financial report. The first document that you will find is the February 22nd, 2018 general fund revenues. We're looking at that one, one more right there. Any questions about the year-to-date general fund revenue detail report? If you go to the February 22nd. On the financial, you'll see the. Yeah, they changed the summary for a little bit, but there we go. July 117 through January 31, 18. General account report. See a cash balance of fifteen million, two hundred and five thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-three cents. And the fund equity, fifteen million, sixty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. Any questions about that report? Do you have Ms. Yawn, who is here, as interim comptroller, Miss Yawn, any comments to add to that report?
Our revenue, our revenue still remain up for the month of January compared to last year from looking at those. The federal taxes are still.
Bring us to the comparison report. Look at the comparison where we're at in January this year to January last year. There are some changes moving through legislatively with the T A B T tax. There are bills and proposals swallowed out of the state, but it could change the revenue we receive with T A B T. Looks like we might receive a little less in a few weeks' time. Are there any comments about this report, the comparison?
That's good.
And then that moves into the SPOS board summary. You'll see our January revenue, SPOS board was five hundred and twenty-seven thousand and four dollars and two cents. We had a good January as compared to last year. And hopefully with the federal tax changes, people will have more money in their pockets and see spending go up.
This, I didn't ask you to prepare for this question. You don't have to answer me tonight, but have we ever taken time to calculate the difference in SPOS receipts pre-T A B T tax changes versus SPOS afterwards? You see what we're.
I don't know. We've not done that. I can leave that.
Would it be a significant amount?
We average about anywhere from ninety-five thousand to one hundred and eleven thousand monthly on our T A B T that we take.
That's a good question.
Because I think we kind of look at the SPOS receipts as the strength of local, and then we forget that we move the T A B T to a different way of collecting and reporting.
Something we'd study.
And we're booking that in the general fund.
That's great.
And we'll have more in-depth discussion on that. At our retreat Saturday morning, we'll have a lot more information, some projections for next year. We'll receive a draft, a lot of cheap, we'll present to y'all Saturday morning. Much more in-depth discussion.
And I've logged out of January. I'll log back in January as soon as I'm good to go.
All right. If there's no objections, we'll place the financial report on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. The next item on the agenda is the asthma-friendly school. And we have Ms. Kathy Cole here with us tonight to discuss and present an asthma initiative that we're really excited about. And Ms. Cole has brought some support here with us to explain the initiative. So, the report is yours, Ms. Cole.
I'm not going to take long because I have the people that know the most about this here tonight. We are, I have spoken with you before about what we're trying to do at Coffee County for asthma. And we are partners, we're a grant with the Georgia Department of Public Health, and we're doing an education program at middle school for our children. A part of that, which has been very successful, this is our second year doing that. And part of that, that grant is looking at making the school system and the community an asthma-friendly school system and eventually making the community more friendly for asthmatic and respiratory issues in this area. We did have a high prevalence of asthma in Coffee County. You know, we're one of the highest areas in that. So I did pass out the proposed protocol, and I also included what Ware County did. They did it a couple of months ago, just to compare. And we're basically doing the same thing in the two proposals. It, there were just a few things that were different for Coffee County, so you can look at those. And, but I do want to introduce Mr. John Ramsey. I met him eight years ago. He's with the Georgia Asthma Coalition, and he works very tirelessly. He's very active, and he works very hard in the state of Georgia. And he's been very supportive at Coffee County. And he's spent a lot of time over here with us doing a lot of education and stuff.
Thank you. I am John Ramsey. I'm a bridge nurse and asthma educator. I founded, co-founded Georgia Asthma Coalition a long time, Dr. Tracy Bridges and Dr. Dennis Robinson, which y'all knew is a, was a pediatrician here at town for a hundred years, which is my personal friend and boss. But what I wanted to just tell you is briefly in about two minutes, and then we'll let D P H stand up and talk about Georgia's friendly policy. It's something that we've seen, and I'm all over the state. I was in Atlanta three times last week. I'm actually writing new legislation. I wrote Senate Bill 126, and which allows for your epinephrine and albuterol in your schools. I'm actually writing amendments to that law. And I just testified Monday in Capitol on the Senate Bill 125, 151, had to do with access to better drugs for asthma. And the insurance company paid for it. They had their lobbies there, and they don't want to do that. But that's okay. We're in it now. But real quickly, I just want to tell you, why is Georgia's friendly school policy such a big deal? And what we have found out throughout our studies and all is that there's a triple down effect. When your kids are not in this school, and number two reason for absenteeism in the state of Georgia, down is number one, asthma is number two. It costs you and me money as taxpayers. Every time that kid is not sitting in that seat, it costs you money. There's a perdeon that gets taken away. So it's very important for these kids to get treated. Thank God you've got a school-based health clinic there, and we can go ahead and take kids over there. Send your kids to school unless they have the active flu. But we want them to send there. We want them to see that nurse practitioner. And she can make the determination whether to send them home or not, but we need to keep them in school. Because what we've seen is test scores goes up. You get your money that you can pay your teachers and your nurses. But another thing is there's a triple down effect. What we've seen with our, the candidates that we work with, is that when mom and dad is out with that kid in the hospital, they're sick with asthma or whatever, mom and dad miss work. Taxes are not paid. There is a triple down effect within our schools and within our communities every day because it affects everybody. It's a community by the thing, asthma is. I am a severe asthmatic myself. I carry my little American Express card with me everywhere. I know what it feels like to almost die three times. I ran a level four trauma center in Children's Hospital eight years, and I've seen way too many kids die with asthma. There's no reason for kids to die. There's no reason for mom and dad to be missing work. If we can get these kids in, establish a policy that we're going to be a asthma-friendly school, believe me, industry likes to see that. What's one of the first things they do when they're trying to relocate to a community? How's your schools? What are they like? Are they schools of excellence? And you say, oh, yeah, we have schools of excellence in Coffee County, but we have a policy here that we're taking care of our kids. And they look at that. So it would help you economically to have signage out there. We're not only a school of excellence, but you know what? We're taking care of your children. We're going to be there for them. And you will be recognized, and that is what Dr. Emery Coleman is going to talk to you right back. But there's an economic impact to adopting this policy. Emery?
Thank you so much for having me. As John mentioned, I am Dr. Emery Coleman. I'm a policy analyst for the Georgia Department of Public Health. I did wanted to acknowledge my colleague who's here, Joanna Hill. She also worked with the Georgia Asthma Control Program. We are very proud of the work you are doing here in Coffee County. Kathy Cole has done an amazing job with basically setting the bar high and setting the example for the rest of the state. We point to Coffee County all the time as what we want to see other school districts do when it comes to asthma management. Not too long ago, we partnered with Kathy on a pilot project to really educate kids on how to manage your asthma. As you guys know, knowledge is power. And it's been great to see educating these students on how to manage your asthma. Self-management education is really helping them not end up missing school, which is very important to all of us, including the students themselves. The policy is amazing, and what's even better than that is you're already doing it. Before we get to this place where we're proposing a draft procedure slash policy to a school board, we want to make sure all the components are in place. I'm also very delighted to share with you that out of the 181 school districts here in Georgia, only 125 have a 100% tobacco-free school policy in place. And Coffee County is one of those school districts with a tobacco-free schools policy in place. And so a lot of this stuff is stuff you're already doing. And I want to encourage you to really take a look at this as something to get recognized for the work that you're already doing. We see a lot of asthma-related issues in school-aged children. The numbers are high and they're consistent, but we're delighted to know that having schools like Coffee County who is taking a step and saying, you know what, we're going to do something about this, is really helping to save lives. If you go in your folder, you'll get information all about our program. One is asthma-friendly schools toolkit, which we look at as a one-stop shop where you can get all the information you need to know about the program. You'll get the model policy language. There'll be a list of resources in the back. You'll also have information specifically about data. And a lot of what we do at the Department of Public Health is we collect state-level data to really help everyone understand prevalence and incident, what's going on throughout the state so that you know where the problem areas are. And we do know there is an asthma issue here in Coffee County. So the great work you're doing is amazing, and we want to continue to capture the effects of it so that we can compare in 2020 or years down the road and say, hey, as a result of you all taking a leadership role in this, look and see what we've been able to accomplish. Also, in your folder is information about Senate Bill 126. John did a great job sharing about what it entails. We have an infographic that really details out what that means. I mean, it's so important that students can self-carry and self-administer their quick relief medication, whether it be albuterol or anything. So I really would encourage you to visit our website. If you need to get in contact with us, please let us know. We definitely appreciate this partnership. The work you're doing here is outstanding, especially for this part of the state. Oftentimes, people look to the metro Atlanta area as the only area where things are happening when it comes to policies or procedures. But I am so proud to be able to say, look at Coffee County, look at what they're doing, not only with the policy, but also with the clinic, with teaching kids how to manage your asthma. I mean, what you're doing is impacting positive social change. It's impacting the entire community. So I would encourage you to consider this proposal, and we look forward to being able to answering the questions that you have.
And I just wanted to interject that out of our class that we had last year, we were selected. Can you tell them about that when we went to the summit in Atlanta?
Oh, yes, please. Thank you, Kathy. So last year, we hosted our very first asthma-friendly school summit in August. It was in Atlanta, Georgia Tech. And we invited Kathy and some of the students she worked with to come and share. Because again, we really didn't have a lot of schools doing this. And so your very own students came on stage in front of about 130 people, which I, you can imagine was a little challenging for some of them, but they did an excellent job talking about the program, what they learned, the information they got out of it, how it impacted not just their ability to manage their asthma, but to be able to educate their parents on helping them with managing their asthma. They were able to answer questions and talk to adults. I'm talking about school nurses, other school staff, state employees, people from across the state was able to hear all about what they're learning. And so this pilot project has served its purpose because now we know it works, it can be done, and we can look to the rest of the state and say, look, please replicate what Coffee County has done. And so that's just one of a whole lot of things that you have here that a lot of places do not have. So adopting this policy would really, really seal the deal, so to speak, and really help the rest of the state to not just look to doing all of this stuff, but be recognized for doing it. We also have a lot of training opportunities that we have throughout the year, and so we always want to make sure you guys know about that. Kathy and John are a part of helping us do that training because you guys are leading in this way. And so it's amazing work you guys have going on here. So we'd love for you to be recognized for it and be able to maybe come to one of our board meetings that we have at the Department of Public Health and take a picture with our commissioner. He definitely is always excited to hear about great work like this going on throughout the state. Any questions?
Well, I guess maybe a question. I've got a child with asthma, so we've been given the last 16 years, we've dealt with patent inhalers and all this kind of stuff. But I was looking through your things, and I never even thought about buses, asthma and stuff like that, you know, something that crossed my mind. When you're talking about the school and, you know, how asthma-friendly is your school and these types of things, one thing we've dealt with at home, and even here when we've done renovations and stuff, is the carpeting. You know, that's something that to me, you know, if I'm trying to do this, I'm trying to push, look, when you do renovations, when you do, don't put carpet bags in schools, you know. I mean, you've got mold under, you've got everything in the world, you know.
Yeah.
And to me, that would be something I, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Just keep in mind, when you're doing renovations, you know, don't put carpet bags in classrooms or gyms or what have you. We've had to do that. I know when we replaced, I mean, gyms now took the carpet out of and replaced them with rubber floors. And we've done a lot like that. To me, at school, that's as big a problem as anything.
Yeah. There's a lot of triggers and things that may cause an asthma episode, so we definitely are mindful of that. And we provide technical assistance to schools all over the state in doing this. And one of the reasons we wanted to prioritize this trip is because we wanted to let you guys know we, we're not just over the phone, but we will come and support and do whatever we can to help you out for us. Thank you.
I'd like to commend Ms. Kathy Cole tonight to the board that Ms. Cole has been passionate about healthcare for our young people here in Coffee County and has really pressed to improve the healthcare in our schools for our young people. And we have the telemedicine units in every school. We have the school-based clinic, the Coffee Regional Medical Center at the middle school. And so this asthma initiative, and she is passionate about it. I want y'all to know that she presses to make sure we're taking care of the health of our young people. And so thank you, Ms. Cole.
It's appreciated.
No, this was informational, and we'll come back to the board and ask the board to approve the policy of the.
Resolution.
Resolution. Yes. Thank you. Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, ma'am. Out-of-state travel is next on the agenda. See, we've got a number of elementary trips. To Jacksonville and Fernandina. Dealing with science and social studies. We have students from Satilla and West Green and Eastside, and Rocks and Mary Hayes. We go on field trips, learn more about science and the habitats in coastal areas. Any questions about out-of-state travel? We'll place this on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. 2018-19 school calendar. We've been discussing this internally and also over the last several board meetings. Created several different draft calendars. We've got three drafts in A, B, or C that have been created. Dr. Evans, it's a lot of work here to try and to manipulate the calendar to give different options to the board. Are there any questions about these drafts, comments, suggestions? I'd like a couple.
Yeah, I was just looking at what Mr. Jowers had asked me to do on draft B. Take off two of the January Christmas break days and replace that with the PL number six and one of the PL days at the end of the year. That won't be a problem, but we want, he asked me to put the two holidays that we cut, put one of them on January the 12th, which is taking one student day, and putting the other one on December 21st, which takes another student day.
But those two, we all, we've already taken before we made the change.
Not student days. We took holidays. We're not finished. At this point in December, we've taken two student days. So in January, he's saying move the PL six up to January the 3rd. So that gives us back a student day if we push back the start date to the 7th. So that gives us back one of the student days. My question is now, where do we make up the other student day? Or otherwise, this will be 179-day calendar. That'll put 86 student days in first semester and 93 days in second semester, which would be 179 days.
My thing is I just see them have that fall break any day in October and get out on Christmas or the Friday before Christmas. Aren't there Christmas on Tuesday?
On Tuesday. And, and they do have that in draft day. They have a two-day fall break, and they do get out the Thursday before Christmas.
This year? On the draft.
On this draft day.
The draft day starts earlier than, start, start days earlier. So if we go back.
I like starting that early.
Yep. I like the later start. I do too, but it's really up to the consensus of the board. So we just, where we're at is trying to find one student day to put in.
If, if we make those modifications, yes.
Any other comments? Because we've got this on the agenda for the retreat.
Retreat Saturday.
Saturday also.
And, and we did share it with the superintendent's advisory council.
Teacher.
Teacher advisory.
Have you got any feedback at all?
Just from those 12 people, one from each campus, that's the only people that we've shown a deal.
And what were there?
They were unanimous for draft day. They said, "As a teacher, you just cannot function without intermittent breaks in the calendar." And draft day gives them that with two days in October, two days in February, and then the other holidays that are in there. All 12 of them said that they were both for draft day. It doesn't matter to me. I can fix it anyway.
Would they, in order to on draft A, without giving up any student days?
We asked them about the four-day pre-planning. They said they could get it done in four days. And they needed the two days in January because we usually use one of those for a teacher work day and one of those for professional learning day. And then, of course, at the end of the year, their comment was that they could wind it up in two days. That gives them a PL day in September and one in March to kind of catch the breath and regroup.
Okay, so they don't want to front-load those, they just want to leave them where they are?
They said calendar A was perfect with them. Now, that's just with people. Of the three, I won't say perfect, but of the three, that's the one they chose.
They don't like what else is done there.
They might if it makes work.
That's what I'd like to see is take what we're talking about and kind of work on something for Saturday.
For suggestions, creating another day in there somewhere.
The only way you can start late.
Or just add 179 days.
The only way you can start later is do like we did in 19, in the early 80s, which is start toward the end of August, first of September, we got out first week, almost the second week of June. So you're, you know, you're just turning that dial a little bit. No one's ever going to get back up the whole week at Thanksgiving. No one's ever going to get back up the whole week.
They said calendar C may be just taken off.
Well, my point is that is, my point in all that is, unless we shift the calendar and then give up some days in the middle, the calendar's just going to be.
Well, there's only so many days.
I agree.
You can't create a day in time.
And we do, we try to do it every year. It's just going to be, but it's all good.
You did a good job last year as well.
Yeah, we cut four days of the school out.
Right, no, we could. Six days, wasn't it? Six days? I had to go back, I thought it was six days we could. Yeah, first semester was cut six days.
Really would like, that was a goal to have 180 days of school.
That hurts.
It did. Okay, just let me know what your ideas are, where to put that up and down.
We'll work on that tomorrow and be ready for Saturday. All right. Five-year facility plan, Dr. Banks, has been working with the five-year facility plan along with myself and Yone. You want to talk a three- and five-year facility plan?
Yeah. I'm glad to be here tonight once again. We did have a survey team that comes through from the Department of Education on February 1st. It was a five-person team that went through planning for Coffee County Schools. Upon being here that day, we took a visit to about four different locations. First place to go to was George Washington College Freshman Campus. Went through certain wings there. Dr. Lee's emphasized about the changes we had made in the cafeteria. And then we went from there to Eastside Elementary. We talked about the modification and improvements that we made with the restrooms over the summer. Then from there, we went to Coffee Middle School, large facility. They were impressed with that facility as well as our ag building, which was basically new. They were very impressed with some of the things that we have going on in the ag building. The smell might not have been that great that day, but.
Little bit.
Yes, they were there. We had a good time there. And then from Coffee Middle School, we went to Coffee High School, and they pretty much walked a few areas there, and then we came back to the board office. But one thing, according to the observation from the survey team, they did have some observations that they made, and they actually told us about the observations. And I go into some of those observations, what was generalized or made from their team review. One of the things that was evident with Coffee County Schools is that we have effective long-range planning. One thing I can say since being here in 2001, we always believe that prior plan prevents core performance. And I believe that the job that you guys do at the board, you always plan ahead. It's ongoing. We evaluate the plan, and then we go back and rectify anything that needs, I guess, modifications. But according to that particular team that was here on February 1st, they said the facilities of Coffee County Schools in almost all instances exceed those of most school districts. The facilities were clean and appeared well-maintained. And I would say they were very impressed with the progress that's being made with the finance center. We feel and they felt as well that that's going to be a great addition to Coffee County Schools with the many things that can go on with performing our center. In addition to that, one thing they said about the ninth-grade facility, and I'll read, hopefully word for word, what the team had actually printed for us, was, "The team encourages all involved to continue to seek out the most viable options for housing ninth-grade students in the future." The survey team opines, which is a statement of opinion, that the existing ninth-grade center is of an age and quality of original construction that when the Coffee County Schools no longer use it for housing students, that it likely will not be suitable for housing other school programs or personnel. Also, the survey team certainly commends all involved with the quality of the facilities program, the attention to detail in the planning that are evident. And the last comment, the last sentence there was, "It is noteworthy that a positive school environment was rarely apparent in all facilities visited." And I would say that the department, conduct, the friendliness of staff members when we went to those different facilities, it was outstanding. They were very, that particular day, in a very happy mood, and I would say that's pretty much consistent throughout, in my opinion, the school. Every facility that I go to and visit, everybody has a positive attitude. So I think that is great, and I think one of the things about our buildings is in some of the best shape for teaching and learning, and that's what we're all here for. And I think the job that you guys have done on the board, you guys make sure that you see to the needs of all facilities. Going forward, we'll talk hopefully on Saturday at the retreat on some things that we have to get done, hopefully this upcoming year's summer. So that was basically the review, and I thank all of you for making things better for our kids in Coffee County school system. I think all, with the last spots that I looked at, just about every school was actually had something, some type of renovation did to it, or like in Broxton's case, or Nichols, their new facilities. So I think that we're on the move with improving all of our school buildings, and I think that's a great thing, and I think that when you have a great building, teaching and learning will be prevalent throughout the whole community. And I think this is a great place, in my opinion, to live and to actually have kids go to a school system. We do a great, a plethora of great things in our community. So I think I commend Dr. Lee's leadership and the Board and what you guys do. So that's basically any questions or concerns that you have based upon that five-year review. And we will go into more detail with that hopefully on Saturday.
The comments that you see on there, that's straight from the facilities team. We just cut and paste their comments in here, and I was pleased when they said, because we didn't prep our schools, we didn't tell them we're coming and tell them to coach them up or anything, but they were real pleased with our schools. And they said the climate of our schools. When you go into school, people talk about, you can tell if it's a positive climate or not with the kids and how the students are acting. And they commented that each school, they could just tell it's a positive place for young people, and the students were well-behaved, and we walked them right through the middle of the middle school with all those kids changing classes, and the ninth grade with all of them changing classes, and they were real impressed. So you'll see the tabulation of facilities and funding sources. This is the state entitlement that we'll earn upon approving this new five-year plan. So with this new five-year plan, we will earn an entitlement $2,324,000 for Coffee High School renovations there. You'll see the local contribution. This is an estimate from the architect that worked on the plan, so that's just an estimate of what we may want to put into it from local east loss allocation. That's certainly not a required amount that we put in, but that's the suggested amount from the architect that looked at the school. And then you'll see the Eastside Elementary, state entitlement earnings, we'll earn $1,001,001 on the Eastside Elementary. West Green Elementary will earn $900,000 roughly. Indian Creek, Indian Creek is just coming into entitlement. Their air conditions, their HVAC units are for the most part original, so a good bit of that will go towards HVAC replacement at Indian Creek ultimately. They're not all, they're not, they don't necessarily all have to be replaced, but they'll be eligible. So that's why we earn that big dollar amount at Indian Creek, because it's just hitting 20 years old. Ambrose, Satilla, Coffee Middle School will be coming into entitlement funding. You'll see a large amount there that we will be able to earn from the state. George Washington Carver, it doesn't earn entitlement from the state. Has to do with the number of students that attend there and the fact that it's a single Westside Elementary School will earn some entitlement. Nichols Elementary School, of course, it's brand-new, it doesn't earn. Broxton doesn't earn, and the Wiregrass Career Academy doesn't earn. We did put out there to decide general maintenance, but of course, we'll maintain those facilities using east loss and general funds as needed, so. But we will earn a total of $14,991,843 in entitlement earnings. Of course, it'll be a challenge to do all of that work, as you know, it's a five-year plan, so the board can prioritize what work we want to do over the next five years. But upon approving this plan, we'll submit this to the, back to the State Board of Education, and then they'll approve it once we approve the resolution, and then we'll become eligible for this money starting next fiscal year.
So the fiscal year is in length?
Yes, sir. And you'll see the, I did attach the resolution that the board will need to approve for us to send this back up to the State Department for them then to approve.
Do that tonight?
We could approve it tonight. I'd planned for y'all to approve it at the work session Saturday, if you want to go into a little more detail.
How long does it feel to wait till?
Yes, sir. So that was the plan. The next item on the agenda is the GSBA recognition. We wanted to review the new recognition program with the board, just so everybody understands when we go to the conference, what it will take to achieve the different levels of recognition. Quality Board is level one, Distinguished Board is level two, Exemplary Board is level three. Of course, the last go-around on their recognition program, we were exemplar board. The way I understand it, we can move right back into exemplary if we achieve these things that they've put forth. We are currently working on strategic plans, so by the time this rolls around, we'll have the new addition of our five-year strategic plan completed. We are looking at the Vision Project, the folks who are helping us with strategic planning, the Forward Next Generation group, they did, insisted that they do a crosswalk with the Vision Project standards, so they did a crosswalk with the Vision Project standards to make sure they align with what we're doing with Forward Next Generation. So we'll incorporate those Vision Project standards into our new strategic plan. And I explained to them that we wanted to be able to pursue this recognition program because our squad did that. And then you'll see, there's other things that we have to do. Self-assessment, which we've done in the past and discussed at retreat, said, "We wanted to consult with the GSBA." Superintendent Evaluation, the alliance of the GSBA evaluation instrument, we used that in the past. The State Board of Education, annual training requirements are exceeded by minimum three additional credit hours. We've typically gotten that in the past, exceeded that. And that we comply with all standards of selected accreditation associations. We'll be able to send our latest advance set. And we will be going through advanced accreditation next spring, next March, so we're already prepared for that and getting ready to go through that process. And then the ethics, all we'll abide by our code of ethics, of course, we do that. And then annually adopt the balanced budget and so forth. So that is the recognition program, but I thought it'd be prudent to review that with the board moving forward, so we'll talk about it, if I understand what we're talking about and what requirements are. Any questions? That was just information. The delegate and alternate, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
We need to appoint a delegate and an alternate for the summer conference.
Right, I'm currently in the deli. So I don't mind serving again. Any motion or something?
Regulations pressed to serve as our delegate conference this year and Mr. Miller's office. Good to meet.
In case I get a false horse trolley.
In case I have another check.
Get back up. So I've got the motion and the second on paper.
And then the next item on the agenda is audience participation.
There's two names on here, but I think it was the ladies.
Oh, they just signed it.
All right.
Let's see if you report it.
I'm Adam Mount, the lobby. All right. Since there is no audience participation, we'll move forward, and I am asking for an executive session to discuss and deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal of periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, and also to discuss or to discuss the purchase or disposal of property. And that is all.
Any questions for executive session?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Jowers, call for it. All right, thank you.